Let's get this puppy started.
Yeah, it looks like everybody's kind of rushing.
Seen some of that, I don't know, I don't know today.
Okay.
He, we, we put it everywhere, just so you can follow along.
Gotcha.
So, make your motion.
Send my motion for that.
Okay.
Hey, we're ready?
We're ready.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order, please rise. Commissioner McDaniels, would you make us some prayer?
Father in heaven, we love thee and we thank thee that we're able to meet here as Americans, please bless us with thy spirit. Thankful that we can make decisions and, and we ask thee that we'll make the right ones and come together and do what's right. We love thee, we're thankful that we live in America. Bless us with the blessings that we are in need of, please, and help us to go forth and be good examples and help somebody. And these things we say in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Mr. Sawyer, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank. All right, do we have any changes or additions?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one change under new business item number three. Michelle Truby-Tillen will be presenting that item tonight. And then under closed session, we won't have a need for item number one. But we will still need an item number two.
All right, thank you. Stand for motion.
Move that we accept the agenda as amended?
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, it will pass. All right. Consent agenda. Consideration of approval of treasure check register for March 2023. Number two, consideration of approval of finance check register for March 2023. Consideration of approval of FY 23 budget adjustment number 14, resolution number 222359. Number four, consideration of award of bid number 222328, purchase of two new moors for Riverview Golf Course. Number five, consideration of approval of resolution number 222358, support of county road 350 NMDOT Transportation Project Fund TPF Grant Application. Number six, consideration of amended and restated memorandum of understanding between the town of Kirtland and San Juan County for Fire, Police and Road Maintenance Service. And number seven, consideration of extension of lease agreement with Process Equipment and Service Company, Inc., Pesco. I think that's it, right?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry. All right, new business. Consideration of final plat for Little Creek Subdivision. David Barnett. Welcome, how are you?
Commissioners, good afternoon. Last December, the commission approved the preliminary plat for this subdivision. And this is a 48 lot subdivision adjacent to the city of Farmington. The city's going to extend all services and the developer has entered an agreement with the city and the county to make sure that that happens. And final plat is in substantial conformity with the preliminary plat. Staff approves, requests approval of the final plat.
All right. Any questions? Okay, I'll stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the final plat for the Little Creek subdivision phase, Adrian Flatt A.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, motion will carry. All right, thank you. Are you have another one?
I have the next one.
Okay, sorry, yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, the next item is a variance request by Richard and Nat Davis. They're making an adjustment to their property. After the adjustment, it's still around a half an acre, which is under the three quarter acre minimum for septic. They have the environment department's approval using the existing system and continuing to use it after the adjustment. So staff would recommend approval of the variance.
All right. Do we have any?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barnett, you're saying you would approve it?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner McDaniel, yes, the staff would recommend approval based on the, the environment department's. No objection to, to continuing the usage of that, that existing liquid waste system.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, like me and Commissioner McDaniel, just for some history, we've. Sorry. We've approved these, commission, previous commissions have approved these types of variances when the New Mexico Environment Department has approved the liquid waste disposal system, which they have in this case. So just, so you're aware of that and knowing that that's been the case, otherwise the three quarter acre minimum lot size would be required.
That is the standard in our subdivision regulations based on the, the minimum standard and liquid waste regulations.
Thank you for that. Could be that you're just so soft spoken, or maybe I'm getting harder here, I don't know.
All right, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the variance for Richard and Nat Davis regarding their septic system.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry.
Thank you, sir.
Consider, number three, consideration of application for variance from San Juan County Cannabis Ordinance 120. Michelle.
And I believe Mr. Sawyer has a little bit he's got to say first.
Yes, of course. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um, I wanted to make a few comments regarding this item directed more to the public than to the commission. When the commission considers this item, they will be asking few if any questions to the applicant. The reason for this is that the hearing on this issue has already been conducted by a hearing officer. If the commission were to ask a lot of questions and reconduct parts of the hearing tonight at this meeting, it would violate the due process rights of parties who did not have noticed that a new hearing would be conducted. Instead, the commission will be relying on the evidence gathered by the hearing officer at the cannabis variance hearing to make their decision. They've also been able to consider comments they have individually received from constituents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Workers' Operations submitted variance petition to the Community Development Department on February 28th. Petitioners seeking a variance from section 3A of ordinance 120, the minimum separation distance from a residence requirement. Petitioner wishes to operate an indoor production or grow, production is grow, facility. The purpose building, or the proposed building will be on property located at 1040 South Main Aztec. The proposed cannabis business is within 300 foot of one residence, which is 279 feet away. A public hearing was held before Officer F. Chester Miller III on March 22nd, 23. The Community Development Department recommended to the hearing officer the variance be denied based on not meeting the first criteria, which states that special circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure or building involved that are not self-imposed, self-created or otherwise the result of actions by the applicant. One citizen appeared at the hearing and spoke in opposition to the variance. The hearing officer's findings of fact recount statements made at the hearing by the citizen, the applicant and the staff. Hearing Officer Miller submitted written findings and conclusions and recommends the request for variance be denied. This is an action item on tonight's staff is requesting the commission consider either approval or denial of this variance request.
But it was your recommend, recommendation?
For denial.
For denial. Clarifying that. Any conversation?
Mr. Chairman, uh, if we're going to do something, we need to do it right, I would make a motion, we deny it.
Hey? We have a second?
I would second that.
Any other discussion?
Just one, one quick question, the, so the building hasn't been built yet and it could be built somewhere where it would be in compliance?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner said it is have to be moved, the framing for the foundation is all that's in the ground, it would have to move 21 foot to the side.
So the building hasn't been built yet?
No, nothing has been done except for the framing for the foundation.
Okay.
And they would be able to reapply, if, if they did move the building, they could reapply?
They, they won't. Mr. Chair, they won't even need a variance, that's the, the whole idea was that if you don't need a variance because you can move it, then there's no reason to apply.
All right, with a motion and a second, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion will carry. Number four, Largo Canyon Access Five Mile Bridge, Mr. Nick Perel.
Wait for Porter to get. Oh, is it? You can get the wrong presentation, that's the solar.
Glad we're not on a field trip today.
That's the one out there. All right, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we're here today to talk about an alternative analysis that has been prepared for Five Mile Bridge and Largo Canyon. Some, some history, this, this structure was originally located on what is now US 64 in Blanco. It's built in 1928, nearly 40 years later in 1966, it was moved to its current location as a joint project between the county, El Paso Corporation and the New Mexico DOT. I think it's important to note that, you know, because this was a, a structure that initially spanned the, the San Juan River. The crossing was made to fit the structure and not the structure made to fit the crossing. And what that involved was a, as a significant earth moving event or effort on the, the east side of the crossing that, that constrained the wash to its current location. So since 1966, it's been there, frankly, I think it's, it's shocking that it continues to remain and has been serviceable. There have been many number of studies and remediation efforts and efforts to keep it open, largely since, you know, the, the turn of this century, but some before. So with that said, we did receive $150,000 in capital outlay funding in, in 2021 to take a look at what alternatives present themselves with the inevitable decommissioning of this structure given its continued deterioration. So following that award, we have hired AECOM, or an international engineering firm, from them today. Here is Chris Russell, he's the engineer that, that prepared this report. With him is Joey Herring, she's their environmental consultant from Ecosphere. And with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to them, this is a fairly lengthy presentation, some information is, is technical in nature. Please feel free to ask questions, we'll do our best to answer them both during and after the presentation. Both myself and Chris will be involved in that, but without further ado, Mr. Russell.
Good afternoon, knock up. Yeah, Mr. Commission, Commissioners, my name is Chris Russell from AECOM and I am the one who basically prepared the report that you see in this presentation that we're going to go over. As Nick has said, this is a, a bridge that's been out there for better than 50 years, was relocated previous, from a previous location. And as, as Nick has mentioned, basically the channel was made to fit the bridge instead of the bridge fitting the channel. So, okay, so introductions again, my name's Chris, Joey's in the audience, she's here to help us out if we have any questions, she's the environmental specialist. And if we have any questions that for her, she's, will I answer those questions? Next please. So, project overview, basically, as mentioned, this is a, this is a study to figure out, you know, what alternatives are there? Should this bridge not be in service? And it's important to remember that the, the goal of this project is to identify alternatives that don't involve this bridge staying in service. So, our project basically identifies alternatives, it evaluates the existing conditions at the bridge, identifies alternatives to address the needs once. And then, we're going to provide recommendations, so the study limits, as you can see, basically cover existing county road 4450, county road 4990, county road 7225 and county road 7007. It does include the, the actual crossing of the bridge, so we go through the existing conditions at the bridge site itself. Next, please, yes, so it's also important to remember that, you know, for the most part, this bridge serves largely lands that are controlled by the BLM. There are a few private parcels mixed, there are also some Navajo tracks, allotment lands, there's also some state lands mixed in through here, but largely, these are largely this land, this bridge serves land by the BLM, run by the BLM, largely for energy development. What you see up screen right now, this was taken in 20, October of 2022. The bridge is in the lower left-hand corner, you can see it there, you can see the channel basically makes two 90-degree bends before it even gets to the channel. If you look at the upstream and downstream, the channel varies from 700 feet or so wide to almost 1,000 feet just downstream of the bridge. But the bridge itself is only 250 feet wide. So basically, they brought in a ton of earth on this east, kind of northeast approach. Brought in almost 8,000 cubic yards of earth, built a burn, put a road on it, and at the end of the road, they put a bridge. So basically what's happened is we constricted that channel that was seven or 800 feet or 1,000 feet wide in places down to 250 feet. What this has done is create excessive flow velocities, you try to neck down that water, it, the water has to pick up speed to go through and, and squeeze under the bridge. At the same time, while the water is basically queuing up to go under the bridge, it's dropping the sediment out of the water. It's carried all the sediment down the river, down the wash from the upstream, and it's dropping the sediment right, right in that first S curve. What that's also doing is it's kind of raising the elevation of the, of the bottom of the channel. So every now, every, every time we drop more sediment, we raise the bottom of the channel. We only have about four and a half, five feet between the rover, the river, or excuse me, the road and the, and the embankment. So it's not that much leeway left. Next. So the blue, the blue area here, as you can, is the actual watershed that goes, that picks up where the water collects and is funneled under the bridge, as you can see, it takes up a fair bit of, of space, 1,700 square miles. Parts of three counties goes back, goes back almost to the continental divide. So what we did, we modeled it using the USGS New Mexico Regression Equations. We basically put water on top of it and said, how much water is going to reach the bridge? These, these equations were developed by the USGS, they're New Mexico specific and in fact, this area specific. So they have a really good correlation between the measured values in the rivers. Basically, they, they collected a bunch of river data and then developed these equations and they actually develop, or they actually correlate real well between the stream data that we have, the actual field data and these, and the outputs of these equations. So we have a pretty good confidence that these are good numbers that we're using. What we found is at the bridge site, we, we modeled several different scenarios for storms. A more common 25-year storm, now basically that's a storm that you're probably will see a couple times a year, it's a fair, fair common storm versus 100-year storm, which you might see every couple of years. So what we found is at the low end of things, the 25-year storm, the more common storm, 7184 cubic feet per second. For comparison, the San Juan River this year is expected to peak at about 7,000. So this is, this for your common everyday storm is bigger than your peak for the San Juan River, just downstream of the dam. Just to give you some idea of what, what that water would look like. So. So what we did, the next thing we did, we, we actually, we surveyed the date, we surveyed the channel several, about 1,000 feet south, downstream of the bridge and 1,600 feet upstream of the bridge, we actually did a detailed survey, drone survey, and we created an electronic model, a digital elevation model of the channel itself. We then ran these flows through the, that model that we created. And again, I want you to see, the, the important thing here is not so much the water surface elevation, that's the second one there, the WSE, because that's below the level of the bridge, they put the bridge at the right elevation. But what the next piece I want you to pay attention to is that 25-year V, 11.7 feet per second, that's just for perspective, in this, most of the soils in the state of New Mexico, anything above four, six, seven feet per second can cause severe erosions. You're more, you're almost doubling some of that. And that's just with your average, you know, 25-year storm, the one, like I said, you might, you might see a couple times during a monsoon season. So what that's created, you know, of course, when we run the larger volumes through, you know, that's, that, that velocity just keeps going up. So you can take a look, that little red circle, that's where our bridge is, okay? This, if you look at the, look at the velocity scale, you're talking velocities upwards anywhere from 10 to 20 or 14 feet per second. And again, I just, you know, want to reiterate, that's your common, more common storm. So this kind of velocity is hitting that bridge more often, we're not talking about, you know, the, the biblical storm, we're talking about the ones that you see on a pretty regular basis. So just going on to the next here, 100-year flow velocity on the left, again, you can see the bridge in the circle, you're talking almost 16 upwards. Velocity is close to 14 to 16 feet per second. So what, and then of course, on the right-hand side, that's the water depth. You can see basically road, county road 4450 becomes inundated. And if you look at, if you look at two, if you look at both of them, you see the water depths upwards two to three feet and velocities five to six feet alongside the, the road, and if you remember what I said about the velocities, four to six feet will wash out most soils pretty easily in this canyon, so, next please. So basically, this is a picture of what the West Abundant looked like in 2010, you can see there's been attempts to, to to protect that bank, riprap, large chunks of rock, some concrete in there. This is what it looks like in 2022. The county has built this cage and they have filled it with rock. And, and basically what you see is this, this is starting, you, you've got these large voids, and this is on the western bank, but this is where all those velocities are the highest. So these large voids here are already forming, this has only been in place since 2017 and they go back, they go out there occasionally and refill it and, and repack it, but it's washing out. Okay, and again, this is for the common storms, these are the big storms that we're talking about, these are the ones that you see pretty often. The overall condition of the structure is generally pretty poor, as Nick said, it's built 1928, relocated, it's been in service in this location for over 50 years. It was relocated to this place, to this location, you know, and they didn't do anything to the bridge to upgrade the bridge, the bridge is what it was in 1928. So there's just, it's been a, it's been beat up, it's been hit by vehicles, this is just some of the damage that you'd see out there, there's, there's, this is just one of them, but there's, you know, probably easily eight or nine locations along this bridge where vehicles have struck the bridge. You know, it's important to, to keep in mind that the overall condition of the bridge basically is, is the overall condition is based on basically four criteria. The deck, condition of the deck, condition of the superstructure, that's basically the truss that you see out there. The substructure, the abutments, the concrete that holds everything up, the piles, and then the overall deck, or overall deck geometry itself. You get, you, the overall condition of the bridge is the lowest of those four. And in this case, the superstructure was given a rating of four in 19, in 2017 by the New Mexico DOT. That's considered a poor, a, a bridge in poor shape, okay? If you stand out there today, you'll find, you can see places of rust, places where the bridge is damaged like this. This is underneath this, on this picture on the right-hand side, that's underneath, that's actually supporting the deck. Again, we've got severe corrosion, we've got rust, we've got damage to the structure underneath. So the bridge was originally constructed on 60-foot long piles. In 2017, in 2012, a geotechnical firm went out and did a study because there was a consideration for building a low-water crossing in, in place of the bridge. Their evaluation determined that water scour depth, so basically when the water comes through and starts mixing with the sand and the dirt underneath, it starts to scour that, those depths can be upwards 30 feet, but our piles are only 60 feet long, so you, potential to undermine these piles by at least half. So when the water comes through, it becomes like, the, basically the bottom of the channel becomes like quicksand and that sand just moves around and, and flows down, so flows down through the, through the mixes. The county has done some things to try to mitigate some of these issues. You know, before 1991, sometime, the, the load rating was dropped to 10 tons, which maybe was in 1928, a pretty big heavy vehicle, but nothing by today's standards, especially in the oil fields. They did impose a height restriction in 2009. They constructed silt fencing upstream of the bridge to try and stabilize the approach embankments. In 2014 and then in 2017, they constructed that steel cage that we saw. It's important to note that going back through all of the reports that DOT has provided on this, on the replace, on this structure, every one of them going back to the 90s has recommended replacing the structure. Just to kind of give you a sense of, you know, who uses the, how much vehicle or how many people use the traffic, use the road. County did a count in October, early November of last year, and a seven-day count, on, on average, about 174 vehicles a day use that vehicle or use that bridge. Effectively 87 cars going south, 87 cars going north at the end of the day. Keep in mind that these are just, these are just light pickup trucks, light, you know, passenger cars, because the heavier trucks have already been shunted to another route. Simply because, simply by the weight restrictions and the vertical height restriction. Just to keep an eye, or, excuse me, just to talk a little bit about crashes. Again, for five years between 2016 and 2020, there were four reported crashes. Why that's important is because none of them actually occurred at the bridge, so, but, you know, they all, they occurred outside of the bridge area. So the bridge necess, isn't necessarily a safety issue in itself, but it is, it does have its own issues. The substandard bridge rail, of course, means that that potential does exist. If you've been out there, there's a, some of that, some of that safe approach rail is just welded pipe. No, no impact absorption capability at all, no real redirection capability, so it's likely that should somebody actually hit that, they're probably going to either go into the channel or be directed straight into the, uh, structure of the bridge. Basically, not, not a desirable outcome, so. And environmental, always comes up. So what would you be, what's, what's in the canyon that we need to be concerned about? Largo Canyon near that bridge has potential habitat for special, special status species. So any project to, that is undertaken at the bridge site would probably need to be, we'd need to do some further evaluations to understand what the species is, what the, what the impacts are. It's just important to know that in 20, October of 2022, there were no, no species identified, that doesn't, you know, that changes throughout the year, so we'd have to actually do the evaluation a little more, a little more detailed. There are wetlands identified. There are wetlands identified, those are the blue, uh, the little blue areas up and down the bridge. So there's wetlands to be considered. And any project that's undertaken under, uh, at the, at this location would be considered, would require 404 permitting under the Clean Water Act, because it is a, this, uh, channel is a jurisdictional water of the U.S. So it does fall under that permitting. Just other things to keep in mind, you know, Bridge 8118 is a historic resource by definition. So any, any project that would, uh, be taken, would have undertaken in this location would require some evaluation of the structure itself. Largely what would happen in all of, just assuming the bridge would be removed, um, there would have to be some coordination with the, uh, state basically on how, how to document the bridge, um, before removal. So it's not, it's not a, you know, it's not a deal killer to say the bridge is historic. There's just some extra steps that have to be taken to remove the bridge and document what it is you've done to remove it. So what is the goal? What is our goal here? Well, our goal is to provide safer, liable year round access to the points, south, uh, south Largo Canyon area for commercial recreational and residential purposes. Not utilizing Bridge 8118, assuming that the bridge is no longer there. So. Therefore, anything that we do has to basically meet several, any, any of our alternatives have to basically provide and meet certain criteria. One is, you know, this bridge provides access to private and public lands south of the bridge. So whatever alternatives we propose, have to make sure that that's maintained. We have the assess of flow issues. So basically any proposals that we, or any alternatives that we develop, you know, have to address that. Uh, whether it's a new bridge or whether it's a rerouted traffic, whatever we do, we have to address those, those, uh, the channel geometry, the channel, what the water behavior in the channel. All that has to be, uh, all that has to be included. You know, again, the channel threatens to wash up east approach and the east abutment. So again, whatever we do has to, has to address that issue. The overall bridge condition is poor. So as established, this is a very old bridge. It's, it's kind of seen its last serviceable years. So we need to find a way to, we need to find an alternative that still addresses or still meets our goal of providing that service to the south. And again, just to point out, the existing, the existing bridge deck, bridge rail and approach guard rail, they're all substandard by anybody's standards anymore. Not safe, there's serious, they provide a potential hazards to any users, including, uh, you know, motorists, there's no pedestrian facility. So you gotta be, if someone is hiking across the bridge while the vehicle's coming, there's no space for them. You know, it's, it's a, it is a, basically a functionally obsolete bridge. Buying for Model Ts, no more. So our recommendation, given, given the conditions that we see out there, our recommendation to the county is to go ahead and close the bridge to publicly use and as soon as possible, within reason, public notification. We really would like to see it done before the count, or before the monsoon season. Just a few months ago, we, we were all reminded about the, we're all hearing stories about the atmospheric river dumping rain on California. Well, if that's where it happened on our, our, uh, you saw our watershed. I mean, we'd have it, we'd have a, uh, we'd have quite the, probably wouldn't have a bridge. That's quite, quite a, of course, Florida just had a 1,000 year storm. So these things do happen. Um, so we came up with four alternatives. We looked at four ways that we could provide and meet those goals on that previous slide. So the first is to replace the existing bridge with a new bridge. Okay? Second, maybe a new river crossing could be done, you know, somewhere west of Blanco and tying in west of the, of the wash. Uh, alternate, or third alternative, alternative C was to reroute traffic, uh, to considering 40, 4990. And then another alternative is perhaps rerouting traffic a little further south to, um, 7225. So. This is the, uh, this is a conceptual layout of, of what a bridge replacement at the current crossing would look like. As you can see, basically a much longer structure. 800 feet, part of that is to allow the water to go underneath, but also to align the bridge with the channel geometry, where the channel wants to be. We've basically constricted it and now we let it back to where it wants to be. It'll behave a little bit better. And maybe we won't have these problems. So this could be a one, one lane bridge. The traffic does not support a need for a two lane bridge. Geometrically, you know, the approaches are plenty good. You can see across the bridge. You shouldn't have any problems with two people who decide to cross the bridge at the same time. This bridge, even though it's a one lane bridge, would have enough space to let two people or two cars go through, or a car and a bike, car and a pedestrian. So it's not like we'd be setting up a situation where, uh, you know, we're creating a danger hazardous situation, but still a one lane bridge would be sufficient. Um, one lane bridge was built further down 449, uh, 4450 at 10 mile bridge. So one lane bridge is probably plenty good. So of course, the new, the existing bridge would be removed. Simply just again, it's not going to be there. We wanted to compare travel, travel times between the different alternatives. So we picked two common points. In this network that we're looking at, and we decided, you know, to calculate the travel time and distance between those for all four alternatives. That happens to be, uh, we used US 550 to you, uh, US 64 intersection in Bloomfield to the intersection of, uh, 4450, uh, County Road 7007. Those are the two points that are common to all the alternatives. So we have a fair basis of time comparison. In this case, we estimated about 25 to 30 minutes or about 18 miles between those two points for this alternative. We'll keep that in mind because we're going to use that as a comparison for the other two or the other three alternatives as well.
And that would be just one way.
That would be in one direction. That's correct. Yeah. The goal is to maintain that connection. So we want to know what, what each alternative does to that connection. Okay? Alternative B, now the area in red, basically, you know, we're looking at an area where the, where the, where it's the shortest distance between 64 and 44 or 4990. So this is about where we saw the most potential. We would, we would definitely, we would have to, of course, remove Bridge 8118. We would connect to 4990 west of Largo Wash. A detailed study would be required. Just, you know, this area has developed, so we're going to have to spend a little time to figure out where the best alignment would be. So, you know, basically we're looking at point A to point D being trying to figure out what the best way through is. So that would require, that would require a, uh, an alignment study. This alternative would also require significant amounts of right of way acquisition through, uh, through, uh, private parcels. Currently, there's no infrastructure on either side of the river to support this. So that means new roadways, new roadway network. Um, and then of course permitting across the river is, uh, probably could be 10 years, 12 years. It takes a while to do, um, simply going through the process of dealing with the Corps of Engineers, the environmental clearances. It can easily, could take several, like I said, it could take a decade or more to, to accomplish. Our estimated cost based, basically kind of on shooting a straight line between the two, it's about 16.9 million dollars. And of course, that, that can vary depending on what the actual alignment study, part of the alignment study would be developing cost for that. But just, uh, just so you know, it could be 16.9 or maybe more. This is alternative C. Alternative C follows existing roadways. So we basically reroute traffic to 4990 and then that out to, uh, County Road 48, uh, 4450, just, just west of the bridge, about a thousand feet west of the bridge. And then that provides access further south. This, this is this particular, uh, even though there's already roads and stuff already here, there's upgrades that are necessary. We need to do some upgrades to the roadway geometry. There's several tight turns or several steep dips across some of the washes. We need some drainage, rate drainage improvements, culverts most likely. Little bit of study would tell us what size those culverts need to be. We'd be reprofiling the road in those, those locations, uh, to improve the geometry. I think that one of the, uh, one of the key elements here is that there's no significant time change or, you know, change in travel time or distance. We're talking about 30 to 35 minutes versus the 25 to 30 minutes that we had previously. It's only adds about an additional mile. So, um, as far as, you know, being able to get there, it's not significant, doesn't take significantly out of your way. It's also important to know that this round already carries the redirected traffic that can't use the bridge, the heavy trucks, the water trucks, drill rigs, whatever that the, or energy companies are using. So they're already using this round. It also has the shortest implementation time. You, we talked a little bit about the need to shut this bridge down pretty much as soon as we can. So getting a, getting an alternative online quickly, uh, so we can maintain this connection, uh, to, to Largo Canyon is important. This one is pretty much almost immediately. They're using it now. Some of the geometry can be done, uh, improved. The drainage improvements can be done relatively quickly. So we could probably, you could, you could basically turn this one on now if you wanted to. The estimated cost is about three and a half million dollars for some of these improvements. This would be regrading the road. This would be repaving some of 4990, uh, new signing, new striping on 4990. And, uh, and like I said, some, some of the geometric improvements that are required on the, uh, on 4990. Okay. And then the last alternative D, uh, rerouting traffic to 7225, 77007. This is, this is the one that basically comes off just, uh, south of Angel Peak Recreation Area. This road currently is not county maintained. Therefore, it would be for it to be, to assume the role of an alternative access. The county would have to undertake, uh, you know, undertake a maintenance program for it. So it's additional work that the county forces would have to undergo. Right now, the road is basically bladed by the energy companies and they just do what's necessary to get their equipment down there. They're not necessarily concerned about roadway geometry or drainage. They just basically go through, smooth it out, uh, fill in the holes. So that would be something that Nick's crews would have to take on. This particular route has some significant geometric and drainage issues, uh, crosses several large washes, some of which are several hundred feet long. And even on a dry day can be hard, you know, hard to drive. Um, I had to dig my car out twice just to get through there and it was dry that day. So, uh, that was, that was, that kind of told me a lot. So yeah, that, that there's significant necess, uh, necessary improvements, road surface stabilization, traveling, grading, ditches that need to be dug. There's some ditches out there now, but most of the culverts are clogged. Most, if they're not clogged, they're damaged. They need to be replaced. So there's significant work that needs to be done. It does, it does traverse tribal lands, most of 77007. We look back at that land ownership map that we had, most of 7007 is in those allotment lands. So any improvements that would be necessary would require coordination with the BIA and Navo Nation. And because, because coordination sometimes can be difficult between agencies, that we expect that this would probably take several, this would probably take a little longer to implement. Maybe four to five years before it could all be done.
I think you have, we have a question for you. Chairman, if I could, is that, uh, the coordination for Navo Nation and BIA is that due to the fact that we lack right of way?
Right now, there, there does not appear to be any kind of an agreement for this road to be in place. Um, so yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. If, if there is documentation, we don't have it. Um, so I would say it doesn't exist. I don't appreciate that. Sure. So yeah, that coordination would have to be undertaken, uh, to permit the road, get the improvements, permission for making the improvements. As you can see there, the, the bottom, bottom part there, 65 to 70 minutes additional travel time to the same location at, uh, you know, between those, between the, the two, uh, measure points. Uh, an additional 35 miles over the, over the original route. So, you know, this one is doable, but it's probably, uh, probably not our best choice for, for several good reasons. And overall cost is about 5.1 million. Just, just to make those improvements and make the road somewhat passable. Next please. So when we had these alternatives, we, we decided we needed to find some way to measure and evaluate them all and compare them against one another. So we used a total of 100 point scoring system. We decided, we worked out, you know, some of the, we worked out the important pieces that we wanted, that we wanted to measure between the different alternatives. So cost was one of them. Implementation time, implement, implementation time, effect on travel time, future maintenance needs, environmental, community impacts, and then system connectivity, system connectivity is, is, you know, if you take out a link here, do you replace it somewhere else and maintain the, the, the network, uh, the network connections? So we gave them, we ranked them, we assigned some scores to them. Higher scores for more important things, lower scores for those that maybe were less critical. Next please. And we threw, we put it into our evaluation matrix. What you see on the screen is, is basically it's in the report. There's a full version in the report. This is just a snippet of it. So you can see we, we basically use this matrix to kind of evaluate all the, uh, you know, all the, the, the pros and cons of each alternative. We assign a score and then, uh, please next. And at the end of the day, at the end of the whole process, we end up with four scores, one for each, one for each, uh, alternative. Just running through alternative A, replacement of Bridge 8118, you know, 67 points. It's a good middle of road score. Uh, alternative that's, you know, that one, that one, um, scored well, just generally for the, for the, uh, for the, um, addressing the issues of, of the erosion in the channel. And it also is the no impact to the travel time. So it scored pretty well there. It didn't score so well on price at 13.13 million or so is one of the higher priced ones. The new, new connection to 64, 49 points. That did not score so well for implemented, implementation time and cost, and also impact to the community having to take right away. So those, those particular elements scored, it scored pretty, pretty low down on, on, on the scale. Uh, alternative C, close the existing route and reroute traffic to 4900, 4990, excuse me. Um, that scored well. Implementation time was good, uh, cost was good, impacts to the community and neighborhood. A little bit more of an impact as you're going through developed neighborhoods and you're adding extra traffic, but for the most part, it's not a lot of traffic. And the heaviest traffic is already using that route. So you're, you're talking about just adding basically extra pickup trucks. Um, and those, those issues can be mitigated. And then the last alternative D, 59 points, did not score well for implementation time, uh, did not score well for cost and community impacts. But it, you know, it turned out to be all right. Next please. So our recommendation is closing the bridge and rerouting traffic to this route 4990. It's the least costly. It's pretty much immediately deployable. We can, we can start using it right away. It's already being used. Least impacted travel time. And also the impacts to the community can be mitigated and managed. So. And if that, if you have any questions or anything.
So if. Well, my first question would be, who uses the road the most? Are we talking about oil field traffic? Are we talking about residents out there?
Vehicles out there are, are, uh, oil field traffic related.
Is there any residents out there that would be stranded? Like if we just remove the bridge today, are they going to get stranded on, out there or do they still have access?
They would still have access to, in, in the case of alternative C, they'd have access to 550. Um, and again, it only adds about five more minutes of travel time. So it's not, not seen as a significant inconvenience.
Because all of that is dirt road after 4990.
From, well, basically from about mile point 9.5 on County Road 4990, it's a dirt road. It's a well graded dirt road all the way down. So yeah.
And then it's five mile of dirt road on the other side, hence the word, yeah, five mile ridge. All right. Any other questions? Any other questions? All right.
All right.
Thank you very much. That was very good.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, in, in receipt of this report, um, I've had a chance to review with Mike, uh, as well as I know our legal department has looked at it as well as your risk management office. I'll likely be bringing to you at our, our next meeting, a, a resolution, um, to close the bridge. Haven't had a ton of time to think about what that timeline looks like, what a notification, notification plan will look like for those people that might use it. You know, we do accept roads by resolution. I, I believe it only is appropriate that we close them by, by resolution as well. And with that happening, um, I, I think we'll have to have some discussion of funding opportunities for the, for the improvements on forty-nine ninety that, that are included in the report in, in more detail than, than what you saw in the presentation today. I, I think the top two priority projects would be, um, improvements to two low water crossings that are on the paved portion of forty-nine ninety. Those do present a, um, liability issue. You know, there are periods where folks can't cross those, that there would be a, um, an opportunity, like you said, to be, be stranded on, on one side. Those closures are, are quite short. It's typically the, the rain event ends, road opens back up. I, I will note, or we'll note that, um, we do have that bridge currently signed. Don't use it when there's water in the wash. I, I don't know how, how strictly that's, um, accepted by the folks that might be using it. But, but we don't want people using that bridge when the wash is running, just for the reasons, uh, Chris had mentioned. We want an opportunity to put our eyes and, and see what that storm event did, um, to that abutment that's, that's in danger. So again, I'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Again, for the next meeting, I'll, I'll have, uh, I think firearms are on a little bit better, uh, um, a notification plan that would be associated with that closure and, and perhaps have some funding opportunities identified that could potentially fund those, those low water crossing improvements in, in the short term as, as opposed to chasing a grant that might be a, a two or three year project. I think it's something that could be done, um, probably within our, our fiscal budget.
All right. Well, thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I, Commissioners, I thought I'd also, um, tag on to what Mr. Pearl, um, provided you that, our claims manager did reach out to our insurance broker. Now that we're in receipt of this report and the recommendation, uh, from AE Comms to close the bridge, we wanted to know if we would have insurance coverage. If we maintained it open, it kept it open. And, um, we, the bridge would not be excluded from coverage. Uh, however, negligence would come into play, uh, and ultimately, uh, liability to, to the county, county commission. If we were to maintain this bridge in existence, um, as is. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, 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 that's a real problem. Now, we also did reach out to other groups that may be impacted, not just the residents and, and also reached out to the, uh, Hill Corp, who has the majority of ownership of wells in the area. And they indicated that they and their service companies who use the bridge, just light duty trucks today, none of their heavy equipment, they would be able to make alternative plans to have their service companies utilize access for the east side coming from, from highway sixty-four and for the west side, uh, coming from County Route forty-nine ninety. Also touch base with our sheriff's office and our fire department. I want to make sure public safety wouldn't be adversely affected in any way. Fire department today already has a standing order because of the ten ton weight limit and the, and the restriction on height. That any, any incidences on the east side will be coming from highway sixty-four, uh, from the Blanco Fire Station. Service would come from there and on the west side, that would be coming from Sullivan Road Fire Station. And law enforcement would access accordingly the same way. So just want to make sure you were aware of those items because we, once we received knowledge that the recommendation was to close the bridge, we wanted to, to know what, if any, uh, do we have insurance coverage and, and any liability that would exist for the county? And then would public safety be compromised in any form or fashion?
Do you know if you, have you reached out to any of the oil companies? You said Hill Corp. Would they be willing to financially support putting a new bridge in?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that, that's a great question. I have not reached out, um, to, to Hill Corp or any of the other companies that, that have ownership and wells in that area. As you may recall, I think we shared, we talked about this yesterday. The ten mile bridge was actually funded, replacement of that bridge by ConocoPhillips and other producers in the area back in two thousand four or five at a cost of close to two million dollars. It sound about right?
Right. Documentation I seen, I think it was a fifty-fifty split.
Fifty-fifty split, yeah.
We covered half of it, I think, Boston.
So there, there was definitely a well, um, well field contribution to that project. Uh, but certainly I'd be happy if the commission is, uh, desires for me to do so to reach out to, to at least Hill Corp, since they're the primary producer in the area. If you'd like me to do so.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. I had a question about that low water crossing. So what's the liability? Who maintains that? What, what happens?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we maintain it. It's, it's on our, low water crossings are actually fairly prevalent within our, our road system. Where a, a wash crosses a road, it's a, the road is, you know, has a drop down into the wash and, and run back out. Following storm events, we, we oftentimes will have to send a backup to clean the sediment, but there's, there's really no other implication other than that. Again, the desire to perhaps provide a, either an arch culvert or a small bridge would be so there's, let's just say worst case scenario. There's a, a deluge, the washes are running. You know, we have the turnaround, don't drown signage, so people aren't using them. Somebody has medical emergency on the other side of one of those EMS is delayed in, in their response. That, that being said, EMS wouldn't come over by my bridge. So that, you know, that, that problem exists today. I, I think if that's the, if that's the road we're going to maintain as part of our primary transportation network to the area, it's something we want to address, um, with a, with a more permanent solution.
Okay. Thank you.
No.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was a great presentation. All right, number five, permit fees from DE Shaw Reno.
And Mr. Chairman, uh,
Sir.
Commissioners, I, I believe that Peter Kelton was going to go first with, sorry about that.
No, it's okay. We, we chatted.
Okay. Okay. So you're aware of that. Peter Kelton is, uh, our bond counsel, um, involving in the IRBs that were issued to Desiree.
Good evening, uh, Chair, uh, Commissioners. My name is Peter Kelton. I'm with the Rhodey Law Firm. Uh, we are your bond counsel in connection with the, uh, the San Juan Solar Project IRBs. There are three separate IRBs if you recall. Today, I believe you have for you, just for your awareness, uh, updated versions of the, uh, amendments to leases, subleases, amended and restated bills of sale, as well as second amendments to leases and, and assignment and assumption agreement. Uh, you've already, uh, approved, uh, those separate agreements. And today we're just flagging for you that we have continued to update them, uh, in connection with discussions with, uh, the developer, Desiree. And we wanted to let you know that these are the sort of finished products and wanted to give you visibility of where we are in that process. Believe the next step is hopefully to get these items recorded honorable for Friday this week, just to help in finalizing these pieces so that Desiree can push forward with its, uh, with its financing piece in connection with the IRB project to finance the construction. So with that all said, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have regarding what you have in front of you. Uh, again, just bringing this to your attention to, uh, provide visibility.
And Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a thick packet you have referred to, the red line ones. I just wanted to point that out.
And it'd be by this Friday, this coming Friday?
This coming Friday, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I, I think it might be helpful, Peter, for background for the commission as to why, uh, you're presenting these documents to them, updated.
Yes.
Previously approved documents.
Yes. So, uh, these updates are consistent with, uh, prior action regarding these IRBs. Previously you had adopted, uh, a bond ordinance, uh, related to the issuance of the bonds. You had also approved resolutions amending the forms of the, uh, bond documents prior to closing on the bond transaction. And you had also approved by separate resolutions, uh, the, the first set of amendments and then a second amendment to the IRB lease. As you'll notice in the red line documents, some changes were made to reflect that or updates to the definition of equipment and improvements. That's simply to flag that the equipment and improvements can be located either on the project site or on the, uh, on the additional tracks that had been flagged originally as potentially becoming part of the project. But the developer had not yet acquired rights at the time of closing on the IRBs. And now, uh, rather than incorporate those, uh, additional tracks directly into the IRB, the developer would instead just be locating, uh, equipment and improvements on those additional tracks. That way there's no need to bring in the, uh, those additional pieces of property or land tracks into the IRB.
Okay. Any questions? I am. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For the update.
And I will turn it back over to Noah.
Thank you.
Uh, Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for, uh, the opportunity to, uh, to speak here. Thank you for, um, moving along the IRB process just before I get into the topic, uh, for tonight, which is just, just a presentation, um, to talk to you guys about our experience around the country. We do projects, uh, really throughout the U.S. and, uh, in connection with moving into, uh, finalizing the permitting process and getting into construction for San Juan Solar Project, which is very exciting. And in connection of getting that financed in the next week or so, which is partially, uh, why we're, we're pushing, um, for you guys to finalize that resolution that you passed in, in December of last year. So thank you for that. On this presentation, I just, I want to sort of set the table. There, there's not an ask here tonight. This is a opportunity just to share some market information and looking at, uh, permitting fees. This is typically, uh, not like a big material issue in projects that we do in, in counties around the country. Um, and so it wasn't something that was high on our radar as we moved towards construction. And now as we're finalizing permitting, um, I just wanted to go through this presentation. I, I know you guys have it, uh, there, but I'd like to.
Thank you.
Well, sure. Yeah. Okay. Uh, if you can move the slide. So the presentation today, uh, I'll just give a little bit of an overview of the project itself. Provide an update since I have an opportunity, uh, to be here with you. Talk about the permit process, uh, that we're working through and, and how it was structured and the basis for that. Just some sample of industry fees, uh, that we have, uh, experienced or we have gathered over the last three years from projects around the country. Talking about building fees in general that we received, uh, some information from the county. And then some samples that we did just talking to other counties in, in New Mexico. And then just looking at it from a market perspective and then looking at it from a bottom up perspective of sort of what's entailed. And then just some ideas that we have based on experiences we've had in different places in the country of how to think about permitting for large scale projects like this. Uh, so the image here, you guys, uh, can, can see the San Juan Generating Station, which is, you know, been closed as of last year. The, the blue line there is the transmission line. It's about a seven mile. I think of it as an extension cord that we basically, we'll build a new substation up in all those white areas. Those are the panels for the project. And so we'll build a substation there. There's going to be batteries, uh, there as well. This is, it's a two hundred megawatt solar facility, which is about twelve hundred acres of, um, of property. The batteries themselves come in big, large shipping containers and that'll probably be on five to six acres worth of land and the substation is a few acres as well. And then, like I said, you see that sort of jogged line of, of blue. That's the seven mile transmission line to get the power from the solar panels and the battery to the substation at San Juan Generating Station. So thi- this is what's, um, being reviewed. I think we're, we're going to be submitting our final permit sets. It's been a long path, many years of developing. Uh, I think the plan is the end of this week. We've been working with, uh, uh, Mike and, and Robert and Michelle on those, uh, applications and drawings. And we're pushing to start construction in May. So very soon, we're really moving pretty quickly here. Uh, we have an obligation to get power on the system for PNM, uh, by May first of twenty-twenty-four. So these projects, just last piece of context, typically take about eighteen months to build and we have about twelve months, uh, to build. So we are, um, you know, we'll, we'll probably end up putting a little overtime in, uh, to, to make up a little bit of time in schedule. Uh, we feel confident that we can get there, but, uh, you know, ti- time is important for us. So again, the, the purpose here is just to sort of give, give, give context of how the, the regime works here and share some of the knowledge and experience that we have, um, around the country. So the solar IRB, uh, we have three IRBs with the county. One's for two hundred and seventy million dollars for the solar project itself, hundred and fifty million dollars for the battery. And then the transmission line, uh, and the substation is about thirty million dollars. The IRB basis is based on what the IHJ, um, or what, what the county has jurisdiction over, which is the solar and the battery. Uh, the transmission and substation are, are actually not under, um, review. That's something that's actually managed through the PRC at the state level. So the basis for how fees are calculated is based on that four hundred and twenty million dollar, um, fee. So there's three pieces to it. Uh, there's a planned review. You, you guys may all know this, but, uh, just to lay it out as, as we've learned going through the process, uh, which we're about to kick off, then there's an electrical permit and then there's a building fee. And I think the electrical permit is probably the, um, the newest part for the county. That was adopted in two thousand and fifteen, I believe. And it was, it was based on roughly a one megawatt solar project. Uh, and there was a, you know, a certain, uh, percentage of the dollars per kilowatt, uh, up to a certain size, hundred and sixty kilowatts in this case. And then above that was five dollars per kilowatt, which is fairly common to have, um, an approach like that. And just, so just as a point of reference here, that one megawatt, you know, we're two hundred times the size of that. So we've got two hundred megawatts plus a hundred megawatts of battery. And then the building permit, this, this is pretty standard. This is how you guys apply to, you know, all, uh, folks that have a building permit that are coming in. And that's based on a percent of the value. In this case, it's point zero, zero, five. Um, and so the total permit fees, uh, you know, that, that we'll be putting forward would be three point six million dollars. So if you go to the next slide, so we, we just, one of the reasons I'm here frankly, and just for like educational, um, value and bringing this to your attention, just to think about, um, is we, we were just, as we started getting closer to it, we were, we typically don't, we, we don't see, I guess, a, a figure this high. So it, the executives on my team, uh, you know, it, it raised their, um, piqued, piqued their interest. So they asked me to do some research and, and that's why I'm here today. So I won't go through this line by line, but these are projects from Texas, California, Utah. We try, we tried to focus on the west. We do a lot of projects in the east as well, but you know, there tends to be regional variances and a lot of regional similarities in the west versus the east and just how people have set things up over time. And so people, for the most part, we look at this at like a dollar per kilowatt, how the electrical permits set up versus the building permit. And as you, um, as you can see from here, you have in some cases in Texas, probably not, uh, no offense to anybody who's from Texas here. But permitting regulatory matters there are very low. So you can see, I mean, that first one, Alara Solar, uh, two hundred and twenty-five dollars for a hundred and thirty megawatts. That's, you know, virtually zero. And then on the far side of the spectrum in California, typically where you see the most expensive, um, you can get upwards of a million dollars. Next slide.
Mr. Chair, are these electrical permitting fees or building and electrical?
These, so building and electrical from that past, um, slide. Oh, so yeah, they're, they're, they're combined and yeah, thanks for that question. Just for a point of clarification, we just put it on a, on a dollar per Oh, so yeah, they're, they're, they're combined and yeah, thanks for that question. Just for a point of clarification, we just put it on a, on a dollar per kilowatt. Just to like normalize it. But yes, like the, so for example, the solar blue project, 250 megawatts in California, 1.1 million dollars. That included the building and the electrical and the electrical fee. So, this next slide is, is just doing a comparison to see what the average of those projects are, low end, high end. And it, you know, I think reflects what I just discussed. As you would expect, California typically the most expensive. They're, they're, have the most onerous. You know, regulatory and environmental studies, et cetera. And then, you know, we've already walked through the other piece. So, if we go to the next slide. So, we, we just, we trying to get a sense of like what, what's coming through the county. How many building permits in 2021 was the latest data that we could pull off the website? And, you know, there were 377 permits and the average cost was around $80,000. I don't have the, the, the detail of like exactly all those pieces are. You know, I, I don't know that any of those were for solar, large solar facilities. Like these are probably mostly for commercial, residential, possibly some energy for oil and gas, those kinds of facilities. Next slide. So, one thing we, I did discuss with, with the county staff was. It, trying to get an apples and apples comparison is important. And so those prior numbers that you see, many counties around the country require as part of the permit process for us to have a decommissioning. As part of that process. And currently, you know, San Juan County does not require that. We have that with some of our landowners. So, sometimes it can be a requirement landlord, sometimes it's by the, the jurisdiction. Sometimes both have it and tha- and then usually you come up with a way to not duplicate it, but one will govern. You know, whichever makes the most sense for the county. So, I wanted to try to bring in just an idea here because we, we don't have the burden of that decommissioning as part of the fee structure here. So, just to try to at least back that out to, to get a better sense of what that might look like. This is a bit subjective. I, we're just in the process of getting our decommissioning study for San Juan finished. So, I, I didn't have that information for today, so I used it based on a project we're doing in Indiana. That's another 200 megawatt solar project. And roughly the, the decommissioning cost for that project was about $10 million. But in most of these agreements, you get to take salvage value and that roughly is about $3 million. So, you get to sell, you know, some of these aluminum frames, copper wires, like when you disassemble this, you know, the pieces, the, the steel posts and things like that. So, it was roughly about $7 million of net cost to, to do that. In that county in Indiana. You know, they required us to place a bond. At, at the beginning of construction and then through the life of the project. So, if we fall apart, if there's a dispute. If, if, if something happens, right, they've got money to call on to be able to help clean up the project or, or, you know, something. That, that is problematic. So, this, you know, I, I took the 1% because that's roughly, I guess. Sharing some of our cost details with you, but. We, we pay about a 1% per annum on a bond. So, if you look at that number, $70,000 a year. If you take that over 20 years and you take a net present value at 7%, we can play around with those numbers, but it's about $750,000. And so if you take that down, or if you subtract that from the 3.6, you get to 2.8. And then I just have a footnote there, just kind of pointing back to California, which has had the most expensive that were, were, the fee here is still. You know, fair bit higher. Next slide, please. So, the other thing we wanted to take a look at was what, like what are other counties doing in, in New Mexico and how they're thinking about this? There's not a ton because there's not a lot of big solar projects going on. The biggest one probably is a project that we have in McKinley County, which is the Arroyo Solar Project. Which is 300 megawatts and 150 megawatts of battery. So, a little bit bigger. The, the, the number there, 726 is a little bit of a misnomer. It's not, it's not that cheap. There's an IRB structure there as well. And there's some other pieces, but the, the, the fees are, you know, fair, fair bit less than, than we're seeing here. And then in some of these other counties, they didn't really have great experience with big projects. So, most of the feedback we got from them is if you, if you came in with that, we'd probably treat it as like a special project. And we'd have to think about it and like come up with a different way to measure. So, the numbers here, honestly, not the most useful feedback from the other counties. Because people just haven't had deep experience in it.
How many acres is McKinley Arroyo?
Probably 1,500, I would say, like maybe a little bit more. Yeah, it's, I mean, it will be once it gets finalized and completed, which is planned for the end of this year. I think it will be the largest project in the state with San Juan being the second. Okay, so the other part, and you know, I, I did not, th- this is just our own view. Of like work that's required to be able to do the reviews and inspections and things like that that we've seen on other projects. So, you, you, you guys can tell me differently or dispute these numbers, but just giving a sense. The, the current duration for plan review for the county is about two weeks. We have to look at a number of different disciplines from civil and hydrology, electrical, mechanical, structural. And, you know, so in general, there's, there's definitely that expertise in-house. But oftentimes counties around the country, we find will hire a third party engineer to help support and do some of that review. So, just taking a, you know, if you had four people working full time on that. For, for at 200 bucks an hour, you'd come out with that $64,000 number. And then inspections, which are going to happen over the course of the year, likely you need somebody of each discipline, so they have the expertise to do that. Th- this one's probably, I, I'm not exactly sure 100% how to, how to market or calculate it. But the number I came up with was, you know, 330, $350,000. You add that in and then you put, you know, some kind of markup on it and you get somewhere in the 430 to 450,000 dollar range. Next slide. So, I, again, I want to be clear, for San Juan Solar One, we're not asking for any, you know, like. We're, we're fully expecting and planning to pay the fee. You know, we have a review fee that we're going to be submitting and paying for here in the next couple of days, so we can get the review cycle. And then in order to get moving, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. But I just wanted to, we wanted to bring this and just put this information on the table and open a dialogue. And a discussion with, with the county to think about this for future projects. We are in the process of developing a second phase. You know, we know other developers are, are in the area, in the region. And, you know, with, with the Energy Transition Act of 2019, you know, PNM's shift away from coal and into renewables. There's going to be more projects. We're certainly interested in continuing and investing here in the county. And, you know, do, do, doing what we can to, to serve the needs of, of New Mexico and PNM. As they try to hit those, those renewable goals. So, just a couple of things we, we thought might be worth thinking about is, you know, solar is. It, it's a structure, but it's not a habitable structure. So, are there different ways just to think about it? You know, solar, apart from fire, in case there, we have an accident like that. Like there's no county services that are needed or added. We're not adding roads. We're not adding, you know, additional teachers needed to. You know, for, the downside is we don't, we're not bringing 100 new jobs. So, that's sort of the Achilles heel of solar. Once, you know, we have 250 roughly construction jobs that we will create. In the first, you know, in the 12 months, if we do a second phase, we'll be able to kind of roll that over the, the next couple of years. But once these projects are built, you know, there's three to four technicians that, that service them. And, you know, help maintain them. So, that's the first point. The second one is just an idea from one of our, our, our team is like, as we think through this stuff in the future. Is there a way to like create an escrow where you put the fees there so the county has them? But we sort of figure out like what it really costs to do this work and what's fair and what makes sense. You know, to, to developers, to the county in terms of being able to, A, make sure you guys have the, the money you need. You have the right expertise to be able to do these things. And then, you know, whatever that additional is to, you know, helping, help developers like ourselves come in and invest in, in the county. I mentioned this earlier, you know, cr- think about maybe a special use category. And, and I think the, the idea here on say the electrical side is when the ordinance was passed in 2015. It was based on a one megawatt project. So, 25, you know, $25 per kilowatt up to 160 kilowatts and then $5 afterwards. Maybe for a project that's 200 megawatts, you come up with a slightly different sliding scale. So, maybe, you know, it's $15 up to 50 megawatts and, and then, you know, five. I, I, I don't know. I'm not pitching, you know, a particular ask, but just an idea of thinking about like, how do you manage projects at this scale? Is, you know, should they be thought about differently? And then the last one is, I, I don't know, this might be a little bit of a wild hair, but because I'm not a building expert. I'm certainly not going to be changing any na- national building codes or things like that. But what the definition of occupancy is when it comes to a building structure. Because of, again, solar, nobody's going to be living or being out there. It's a high voltage environment. And then for the battery itself, you know, it's a big shipping container that no, no one's ever going to go in or out of it. You know, it's basically just a big giant ferrocell battery sitting, you know, out there on the, the ground. So, that, that is, that concludes my presentation. I really appreciate you guys listening to me. I know prob- I'm probably not your favorite person right now to be poking holes in your, in your, you know, permit fee structure. But we, we just, you know, we, we, we build these projects around the country. And, you know, this one just sort of bubbled to the top internally. It was like, hey, wow, that's a little more expensive than we're used to. So, we wanted to, to bring that to your attention.
All right, any questions?
Mr. Chair, so it sounds like we're kind of locked in where we're at right now with you closing in a week. So, time wise, I, I just don't see how we get there. My, my question moving forward, you were talking about San Juan Two. Is that proposed to be in the same area as San Juan One? So that i- if we were to adjust the fee schedule, it would have. It, it would apply to that, I guess, is what, what I'm.
Yeah, I don't know if I can go back to the second slide or third slide. The one with the map.
Three.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I didn't, it's not on here, but if you go north and east. So, if you follow Barker Dome Road until you get to the Ute Mountain Ute boundary between the, the county and, and tribal land. That is basically the location. So, I would say three miles northeast of where you see the big white blob there.
But it would still be on council?
Be in county, yes. Apart from the, the piece that's on the, the Ute tribal land.
So, there is a portion of San Juan Two that would be on the Ute?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other projects? I, I, I assume while there's the, the Arroyo and the San Juan are both ETA related projects. San Juan Two would be an ETA related project. Do you have any other projects that you're looking at that are ETA related?
I mean, I can just speak for us at DESRiE. So, we're in the process of, because we have other land holdings. In, in and around this area and continue to look at developing because of the infrastructure of San Juan. And, and the needs of not only PNM, but there are other customers. I mean, driven by some data centers and, and others that are interested in buying the energy. So, like there's, there's a lot of interesting opportunities that we're, you know, we're looking at.
Because transmission is huge, right?
Yeah.
You know, and the closer you are, the, the better off you are.
Exactly. And so we're actually, my colleague Owen i- is working on this right now. We are looking at submitting a, like a new application into the transmission queue with PNM. Because we have additional land, v- very early stage. So, like that's five plus years away. But we're, we're not the only, right? There's plenty of other developers that are already in the queue. Or, you know, looking at trying to develop projects in, in, in the area of the county.
Right. Anybody else? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right. 05. All right, report from County Manny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Happy to report we had a very successful local government day here for the high school kids in San Juan County last week. And I want to thank all those who participated. I know you, Mr. Chair, did the welcome, our county clerk, our chief deputy assessor. We had Mr. Neely help put together the event, working with Ms. Magah in, in our office. The fire department, the sheriff's office, public works, had static displays outside. And certainly appreciate everybody coming together, 280 to almost 300 kids from Bloomfield High School. Aboh Prep as well as San Juan College High School. And I know Commissioner Fortner asked if we could invite some other schools next year and we're absolutely happy to do that. That's a program we want to expand and, and provide that opportunity as a field trip for every government class. Or social studies class here in San Juan County to have all four school districts represented during that day. So, I want to thank everybody involved with that. But continuing on with the theme of national, of April being National County Government Month tomorrow. I hope you can join us from 11:30 to 1:30 at McGee Park, our annual employee service awards. Where we'll be recognizing our dedicated employees who have made, reached various milestones and service to the county. It's 71 employees that we'll be recognizing with over 750 years of service to the citizens of San Juan County. So, we'd love to, to have you all there as well as all of our department heads and elected officials and, and other supervisors here in the county. To, to recognize the great team that we have here. One other item, we are today, the assessor's office in conjunction with the New Mexico Department of Veterans Affairs. Is, is conducting a, what do they call it? Off, in cer- in-office service day to assist veterans with property tax exemptions. And Mr. Neely informed me that we've had 130 veterans as of 4pm today that have taken advantage of that opportunity. And, and they're still going to be open till 7 o'clock tonight. So, if you know of anybody that might benefit from coming to chat with the assessor and, and the Office of Veterans Affairs for the state of New Mexico. Would certainly encourage them to, to come do so. And last but not least, we, Mr. Perel has informed us that the Cedar Hill Boat Launch is soon to be complete. And so we're going to, we've been, we've been working with the Office of the Natural Resources Trustee. And have a ribbon cutting scheduled for May 16th at 2pm. So, we'll get that on your calendars and hope you can join us for that as well. So, that concludes my report tonight. You can stand for any other questions you might have.
May 16th, is that a Monday?
I believe it's a Tuesday at 2 o'clock.
Yes, sir.
And that does fit with, that's a busy month, so you have something going every Tuesday. Commission meeting Tuesday, workshop on the 9th, ribbon cutting on the 16th. And then the 23rd would be the, our second meeting for the month, regular meeting for the month.
All right, I don't have any questions. All right, what's next on our agenda? There it is. Reports from elected officials and department heads.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
And members of the commission. I would just like to report that, as you know, we held our New Mexico Counties Board of Directors election today. And Commissioner Fortner will be the commissioner that will be. Representing San Juan County for the next two years. Congratulations.
All right, comments and input from.
Mr. Chair.
I missed one. Reports of elected officials. Yes, ma'am.
I have, but I have something to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to report that last night I went to the You Matter Banquet. And it's under the umbrella of the San Juan Safe Communities and we support them. And they have 15 seniors that have gone through this program this year. It's been in existence since about 2008. And it's an amazing program. These are stellar young women and men. I was just very impressed. Two of them that I remember are going into the VADMD program. And if people don't know about that, that's something to really. And if people don't know about that, that's something to really, uh, get involved with, because what it does is it, the kids go on to get a B A. And then they go right into medical school. And it's under the hopes that they'll come back to our community to practice. And just one off the top of my head, because, um, Bill Young has been involved with the B A D M D program for years. And his son Curtis came back with now's primary care. So it's a real opportunity. But here, they gave about a five minute speech. And all of us that worked with, uh, kids know the struggle that these young people have. And I think the thing, um, one of the things that the county is really focused on is mental health. And the things that they talked about that goes on in schools, and these are some of the top of the top kids that are in this program that are going on to college. They talk about bullying and depression. And so it's something to keep on our radar, but I'm very thankful that we support this. And they're very appreciative. They said many times, they really appreciate what the city and the county do for this program. So if you ever have an opportunity to, um, go to this banquet this time of year, next year. It's, uh, pretty amazing. My daughter went through it in twenty thirteen. So, um, knowing firsthand as a parent what they do, because, um, they commit to being drug and alcohol free for the whole year. And they go and talk to, uh, elementary age kids. And these, one of the kids has grown up having seen some of the, uh, high school students come to their schools. And they made that same commitment. So, so anyway, I thought it was an awesome experience. Thank you.
This is a great program. All right, any other elected officials, yes, ma'am?
Us too, right?
Yes, department heads.
Um, I just wanted to let you all know, Commission, that the stream gauge links are up for all the stream gauges from Silverton. There's one at Tall Pines or Tall, it's in between Durango and Silverton, as well as Durango, Cedar Hill, down to Aztec, and then on to the Farmington Gage. Currently, we're running about, or above normal for the last five years. But we're not extreme yet. But if we keep continuing to warm up, we can be looking at some flooding coming our way. So just so you all know, if anybody is interested in it, the stream gauges are up on the website, s J County dot net. And then just go to Community Development, flip link, scroll down, link directly to those different gauges. And there's also a number for the high gauge C F S. Or cubic for the cubic foot per second measurement.
Does anybody provide sandbags and sand that you know of?
So Emergency Management does have sandbags available. We do have piles of sand available down at the Pepsi Building with sandbags in a a container for people to get. Um, should there be flooding at any time, Emergency Management will also initiate some sandbagging and through the fire department and some of the other resources we have, and provide those for different individuals that have need.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Mr. Chairman, just to add, um, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Mestas and his work. You know, he's procured two hundred and fifty thousand biodegradable, degradable sandbags. Uh, we've got two hundred thousand, and then you, uh, provided fifty thousand to the city of Farmington. So they've got sandbags available as well. So let's hope we don't need two hundred and fifty thousand sandbags. But we're definitely ready here and prepared in San Juan County.
And, Mr. Chair, I just had a comment that Mike and I had that conversation about biodegradable. Because I was talking to the commissioner in San McGill County. And last year, when, uh, at the height of their flooding because of all the burn scars, they had a hundred thousand, uh, sandbags out. And I was what, I had never thought about, you know, what happens to the sandbags. So it was interesting to to know what happens to them.
Yeah, we actually don't pre-bag them because of the fact that they degrade so badly that by the next time you need them, you just got a pile of sand and plastic in it. Any other questions?
All right, thank you. Okay, any other comments? All right. Um, comments and input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes and to subjects that the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to the comments or input from the general public. Have any comments? Mr. Hubbard. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Joe Hubbard, and I'm a resident of San Juan County. My former boss, Ted Hamblin, passed away. I saw his obituary in the paper. I knew him as a quiet, powerful man. And he managed the jail at the most controversial years. We'd like to forget all that stuff. But it was during that time that I learned about professional courtesy. And what I experienced was not unreasonable. But we had a drive by shooting just up the hill here at Dillon Heights. Most of the community did not know about it. How can we authorize pay raises for our hardworking public servants if we don't know about what's taking place? And sadly, no one else has brought this up, and I'm very reluctant to. Whose Second Amendment rights have more authority? And recent events turned my stomach, as does all of you. Is it the Farmington cop that pulled the trigger? Or was it the law abiding citizen that was shot in his own doorway? Breaks my heart. I'd like to see a reasonable answer. And we're not going to get it from our national leaders. They're so divided. For the week, we are all residents here. We want safe streets for everyone. And I wish the dialogue will at least take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Appreciate it. Any other comments?
I have something. If nobody else. Nobody else has any comments. I just, I think on behalf of all of us, wanted to thank Sheriff's Office for being here. You are appreciated, thank you.
All right. Need to go to closed session?
Mr. Chair, I'd move we go into closed session to discuss the Hames Mountain Electric Co-op versus New Mexico Taxation and Revenue Department litigation pursuant to section ten dash fifteen dash one H seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you close? All right, we will do closed session. Thank you all.
I will stand for a motion.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh.
Yes, that would be you.
Mr. Chair, I'd move we go back into our regular meeting and just state for the record that we did not discuss anything beyond what was previously mentioned in our motion.
Is this yours or mine? Oh, didn't know if somebody put something else on your look at.
Got to admit, for us.
Yep, he should.
That's okay.
Second it?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to carry. And no further business. Anything else adjourned?